All right. Good evening, everyone. We will get started here momentarily. Going to go ahead and call the planning commission meeting for February fourteenth, twenty twenty two to order. Give a quick roll call. Commissioner Nias. Commissioner Vizel. Commissioner Borka.
Present.
I am present. Only absentee that we have is Vice Chairman Nickerson. So we have four members here and by the bylaws, we have enough for a quorum. Go to call to order for call for the vote for the adoption of the agenda for this evening. Commissioner Nias. Commissioner Vizel. Commissioner Borka.
Approve.
And I approve. The agenda passes four to zero. Quick housekeeping note here. We want to do the approval for the minutes for the previous meeting. Quick vote. Commissioner Nias. Commissioner Vizel. Commissioner Borka.
Approve.
And I approve four to zero. The meetings from the previous month were approved. Moving down to the agenda. Going to ask town staff to give the introduction for the first item on the agenda.
Hello, everyone. Already. So the first item on the agenda is the additional use permit application for Prising Stars daycare. The location is seventeen nine four four Main Street. So it's just south of the Town Hall. So to start off, so the proposal is really straightforward. It's the approval of a CUP to allow the expansion of a daycare facility from seventeen nine three four Main Street, which is the parcel next door to the adjoining property at seventeen nine four four Main Street. What this because of the zoning of the property, it's B two, it requires this conditional use permit. Next slide, please. As I stated before, because of the zoning of the property B two, as you see on the screen as well, you'll see that is when a that is what we evaluate as a part of the CUP process. As as I've stated before, this was already the the business was already approved for a CUP in twenty thirteen at the existing site. Now they just want to expand next door into a suite at the building located right next door as, thank you, Joseph, the location and character. So the site is point six one acres. It's located on the corner of Main Street and Whitehaven Drive. The subject site currently has one primary structure. This was previously where was located. Currently, it's vacant. What the applicant is proposing is they are going to occupy around eight eighteen hundred square feet of the space that's located in the front of the building. So the if you're going north, it'll be the northernmost part of the building. That's where they're going to be located. They need ten ten parking spaces as a part of this use of a daycare facility. They meet their requirement with the current current parking arrangement. Beyond that, you know, this this is a great use for this site. They're just going to expand next door. So there's not going to be that much change. In reality, this this process, you know, they've been through this process before and doing this is just a formality for them. They really feel that this will benefit the town in the long term. Next slide, please. Staff feels that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It will benefit the town presidents and it'll add more space to this daycare facility. They're actually turning down clients right now because they don't have enough space at their current location. So this is a large move for them. It's a very important move. And finally, we conclude as staff that the development proposal, it won't affect the health, safety, and the general or the persons occupying the site or those in the neighboring vicinity. Beyond that, that's all I have is any I've been answering any questions that any of you all may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before I open it up for questions, I want to ask for town attorney, because this was already previously approved, is this just for informational for us? Or do we still need to vote on this on this?
I could speak to this. So because this is the previously the business was approved for a site that's located next door on its on a another parcel because they're expanding to a new parcel, they need a another additional use permit to expand the use to a new location, which is right next door. So it might sound a little confusing, but in reality, just because it has its own parcel number, they will need a CUP to add on that space there.
Thank you for the clarification. Open it up for and we don't have anyone for a public hearing for the actual daycare to represent the daycare.
We do not. They I wanted to send. I talked to the applicant today. She she had some personal matters come up and she was not able to attend tonight. She may be able to attend tomorrow night, but I told her that 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 just to stay at home and stay safe and I would inform her of any comments or any questions that might have came up today.
Before I open it up for a vote, I want to give all the council members a chance to ask questions. So Commissioner Nias, any questions? Okay. Commissioner Vizel. Question. Commissioner Borka.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
At first I had a question about the safety in the facility because there are motorcycles stored in the Big Bay areas. There is or there were, but the area you're describing is is the office section. Northern most section is an office section.
Yes.
So there wouldn't have been motorcycles stored there.
No.
So there's there's no fumes and things like that that are of a concern.
No, and that's something that we would take care of at the CO process, making sure that that problem is taken, that that problem is addressed. That's something that we will make sure that the children will not be impacted by that or or the teachers as well at that in that suite. That's a great question. Safely. Thanks.
No more comments or questions. I will call for a vote to for the approval of the conditional use permit for the daycare. Commissioner Nias. Commissioner Vizel. Commissioner Borka. Approve. And I do approve it passes four to zero. Next item on the agenda is Town Square at Dumfries. Before we do this, I just want to query the members of the planning commission to make sure that we have no need for disclosure for any conflict of interest. Just go ahead, not good. Okay. Town staff, we turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Larry Marcus, planning consultant with the town. This evening, Nick and I will give you an overview of the subject application, the proffer condition amendment for Town Square at Dumfries. Just a quick next slide, please. A bit of background for you. If you're not familiar with this. This this rezoning application was originally approved in December two thousand sixteen, and along with that were the original proffers. And so that is what was is up for amendment. Since that time of the four land bays, as you can see in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, the first site plan was approved for for Lambay three. And then the site in two thousand nineteen, the second site plan was approved for Lambay's one and two. So now this evening, we're going to be discussing the proffer amendment, but also Lambay four and and changes to Lambay four. So before you can see six items that are included in the application. And what we're going to do tonight is walk through quickly those six items, what they mean, and how that leads to a staff recommendation to you. Next slide, please. Location and character, just to ensure you understand exactly where on the site this is. So Lambay four is that right abutting the intersection of Grand Park Road and Old Triangle Road, right in in that corner of of the parcel. And yeah, so so along with that, we've been we've been working closely with them on on minor modifications to the to Lambay four as well as future considerations, not included in this, but this as an FYI for potential safety improvements on Grand Park Road. Next slide, please. Yeah, with that, we're jumping to the specifics and I'll hand that over to Nick.
Thank you, Larry, for that. Right. So the site is a part of the Graham really small area of plan in the conference of plan. So as a part of the smaller area plan, the site is designated as mixed use. So the proposed proffer condition amendment is consistent with the conference of plan vision and will satisfy a lot of the goals of the conference of plan in terms of the and use section goals as as well as the affordable dwelling unit part of this project as well that'll hit for the affordability of homes in Dumfries as a part of the as a part of the as a part of the conference of plan as well. Next slide, please. So the site will play out is shown here. There the applicant is just proposing to amend Lambay four. Everything else has already been approved. They've already been approved for site plans on three of the four land bases. This is the final. This is the final plan made that has not been built yet. But after this PCA, they plan to move right into site plan, completing Town Square project that was rezoned back in twenty sixteen. Next slide, please. So the proffer statement, it was what we wanted to highlight are the main six changes that would be encapsulated in the in the amendment to the proffers to start off with. I'm sorry about that. Suddenly hit the mic. Just start off for that. Can we go to the next slide, please? So the first it will be the first amendment would be increasing the number of the age restricted multifamily dwelling units from forty to a hundred. They will be classified as affordable dwelling units as well as to go along with this, we all we are also we also are going to suggest approval of a waiver to allow Town Square to go above the density cap, which I'll talk about in a few slides. But to really highlight that the purpose of this amendment is allowing for the zoning certification required for the VDAHA housing tax credit projects. This zoning verification will be used determining whether the development qualifies for points available under the VHDA's qualified allocation plan for housing tax credits. Next slide, please. Two and three. So the second amendment would be to commit to a minimum of five thousand square feet of commercial use just creating the mixed use aspect of this land bay. And to for three to go along with that, it's the modification of the building layout in Lambay four originally approved in the rezoning in twenty sixteen. This plan bay was going to have a police parcel located, a potential police parcel locate police station on it from that. The town has decided not to pursue that. And from that, the we'd have we'd have an agreement with the applicant to sell that police parcel back to them. So that's as part of this plan bay. Next slide, please. Four, we're just going to this amendment is also modifying the the proffer to accommodate comments made by town staff also to remove the public facility used from Lambay four, as I previously explained. And six is to authorize a modification of the fifteen foot transitional buffer along the perimeter of the Pima boundary as otherwise required in that section of the ordinance. Next slide. And then here are the requested waivers. So the waiver of the density of the of the site, just twenty three over the allowed seventy seven. In reality, the parking requirement, the the parking issues and or not parking issues, but parking required. It meets the parking required for that number as well as the as well as satisfying the TIA requirements that was already approved. The TIA was approved by staff previously, and we accepted those conclusions. So a lot of the a lot of what a lot of questions that we had were answered already in regards to that waiver. And the other modification, as I previously stated, was that they requested the modification of the fifteen foot transitional buffer along the perimeter of the of the site of the Pima boundary. Next slide, please. So staff recommends the following in regards to approval. Larry, I'll turn that over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Nick. Yeah. So in summary, and reference back to the staff report, staff is recommending the amendment to the proffer statement as shown in in the staff report detailed in the staff report, modifications to the MCP as as Nick outlined and and shown in the staff report as well. The waiver to the zoning ordinance to allow the additional twenty three dwelling units to be permitted on this site as as detailed in the staff report in by Nick. And then finally, the modification to the fifteen foot transitional buffer along the perimeter. So that's a summary of the staff recommendations. Before I hand it over for Q and A, just wanted to recognize that the applicant is here and will not be presenting, but but absolutely available to answer any questions that you have or points of clarification that you need on the application. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. I want to open it up for so we said that the applicant is not going to do any presentations for this. And since we know one here for the public, for public testimony, going to open it up for questions from the commission. I'll start with Commissioner Nias. Any questions? Comment?
Yeah. So usually when it's open you know, the Town Square, there's more than one or two entrance. So I'm just worried, is it traffic will be good around that area? The Grand Park is pretty busy most of the time, especially when kids go to school, get out of the school, people go back to work at the rush hour. So that's my question is, you have enough open, you know, entrance or exit for people to get in and get out.
Todd, you want to come up and I I can start with an answer to that, but then well, yes, we can share share the answer. So so that's a delicate balance of of providing additional driveways as well as the access management and the flow of the traffic on particularly Grand Park Road. So the more access points, the more accessibility and lack of backup on the side street. But with within this case, the scale of this land bay and the amount of development, focusing it at that one location, it's looked to be best in in this particular case. But like you said, the cases vary. In this particular case, there's going to be a bit of a backup coming. I would rather be onsite coming out. Don't forecast that, but just it manages the flowed traffic safer and more efficiently on Grand Park.
Okay, because we just approved a few of the P M A P mod about that area with the, you know, the old folks facilities, lots of new buildings there. So once people move in, we do have a, you know, like a traffic problem in the future. That's what I'm thinking. That's the that's the reason I have these questions. And also regarding the question about the parking as well, you do have enough parking spaces. Since when people get off work before they go, they will go to the shopping and everything, you know, that's what I'm concerned about too. So.
Yeah, fair questions. Yeah. So yeah, yeah, go for it.
And then, yeah, of course. And I also wanted to add too, for that, I don't know if I didn't highlight it enough, but all of the dwelling units on this parcel are are it's for a certain age and up. So they're more senior housing, affordable senior housing. So a lot of these people don't even have vehicles. Won't have vehicles or they'll rely on other transportation. Other types of transportation. And the parking rates. So the other thing that was the other aspect of this was the rates was our the rate was already approved in the rezoning in twenty sixteen. So there's not really any there's not really any parking concerns in that regard. That was something that was already planned. So just because there's more mixed or there's more dwelling units along with the five thousand square feet of commercial. Perry can speak to this. The mixed use rate of parking and traffic and vehicle trips actually benefits them in the long run because because you'll have more people who live there. So there's going to be less vehicle trips in and out. But also you'll have people who will go downstairs from the dwelling units above to go maybe shop for whatever that commercial space will be. So the mixed use rate rate now from the forgetting the name of the the company or the organization, but that rate is much smaller than, yeah, from from the IT manual for trip generation rates, that rate is much lower than than the standalone housing, whether it be senior housing or multifamily dwellings. That's all I wanted to add.
Okay.
Yeah, just just a quick summary. So Institute of Transportation Engineers collects data from across the North America on this topic. And so those rates of number of parking spaces you need as well as trips that are generated come back to a category of age restricted, which does bring down the needs in both the generation of trips as well as the needs for for parking based based on the specifications in this application.
Okay.
Yeah.
So my third question is regarding the security. So it's across the street of, you know, Roseanne, and also there's there's also sort of things, even you have an open, you know, parking and space and everything, you have to be careful for the security. So I just want to know how they're going to make it, you know, very secure for people to go in and out, you know, and not too many like homeless hanging around, something like that.
Sure, sure. That that may be best addressed by the applicant.
Good evening, Todd Collins, Community Housing Partners. Each of our properties that we do, especially in the elderly sector, the site is completely covered with cameras. Interior corridors have cameras. Our Town Square site next door. There is well in excess of a hundred cameras over there. We're actually installing one more, which is a special camera system that's set up to actually read license plates in the dark. And that one should be installed within the next month. We had trouble getting one, but it's pretty high quality camera system that we put into the units, but not in the unit, but in the building on the site.
Okay, that's sounds pretty good. Thank you.
Any more questions? Commissioner Nias.
I'm good.
Commissioner Vizel, any questions or comments?
I like the use of the land. Just moving being an elderly facility or age restricted sort of pedestrian safety, there's a lot of walking with with older people, especially because it was mentioned earlier that you know, not all older people have cars. There will definitely be trips over to the Dollar General, you know, all the facilities right across the street. So we there's a flashing light alerting of the of the traffic light coming down. It's kind of a steep hill past the point of collision. I think there needs to be some sign there, which might be up to the town to just alert that it could be pedestrians crossing the street with what looks to be the entrance there at the top of the hill there. I think that's almost off of Route one. The pedestrian safety might be a little bit more of a sort of that on the Grand Park. Also, I don't know, Old Triangle Road has sidewalks. Yeah, those. Yeah, those it for me, you know, I like the use of the layer, but it's about the road surrounding it. Kind of making sure that as a counter, that proper protection for the pedestrians that be walking around.
And if appropriate, sure. Appreciate you bringing that up. I quickly mentioned the safety study on Grand Park Road. That that is in its initial stages. That's why you haven't heard much about it. Just county council of governments and town initiative to look at safety on that stretch from U S one past the site on Grand Park Road and particularly at this intersection of Old Triangle Road. So not a lot to report yet, just that it's the kickoff has begun in that the speed management traffic calming is is key as in as well as more than just vehicular safety, looking at all modes of transportation. So so that's something that that is separate from this application that we've discussed with them, just with with the property and if there's any need for easement over time. And it's been a very open, positive conversation. But too early to commit to anything because the study is is early. So but appreciate you bringing that up.
Also, I would like to add that there is a parking or there is a trail that goes through the lane bay, I believe that's lane bay two on top. Or is it lane bay three on top? Plane bay three. Yeah. So there's a trail that goes from lane bay three all the way down and it's going to go, it's shown actually now it's shown here. It goes from all the way from route one, all the way around lane bay three, and then it will go through the entire plane bay four. So that will enable some pedestrians to walk through that site and get from this their site on hand before over to route one and might make it easier for them to traverse across route one or get to where they want to go a little bit easier without having to go on Grand Park Road.
Commissioner Beisel, any more questions? All right. Commissioner Borka, any questions or comments?
I do. I have eight items to discuss. I know that in the report, it talked about a potential right turn lane off route one. That's probably got to be part of the route one expansion. That would help ease traffic coming off route one onto Grand Park Road. There's discussion of a possible roundabout on Grand Park Road. And I think all of those things will be part of a traffic plan yet to be built, right? That is in the initial stages.
Spot on. Yes.
So I'm okay there. I want to talk about the the senior community. Why the addition of senior residences and not other type or what whether, you know, military families moving into town, looking for places to live. Right now with 40 senior living units, that's 10% of the overall residences. At 77, the maximum by the zoning, that would increase it to 17% senior living. And the request is to go up to 100 and waive the ordinance. And that would be 21% of the units would be for senior living. So what's driving that number? That we need 21%. I'm not saying we don't. I just don't know what's driving the number or the need.
Yeah, fair. Todd, would you mind addressing that?
Yes, when we brought the first project, senior town square at Dumfries, we had a market study completed. And part of that market study showed that we would fill units at what 10 units a month. So that building will be filled in four months. The demand is out there. And so the decision when we came back and started talking to town staff about doing the second building, that was in the back of our mind. It's like there's a big demand here for a market study. And so we were addressing that issue.
Okay. So the market study focused on senior living needs?
Yeah, they specifically look at whatever target market we are looking at. And so the first project was specifically for senior housing, and that's where all the numbers are derived from.
Okay. So the the waiver request to go beyond 77 to go to 100 is increasing by 23. What's the need to go beyond 77? And there's, there's got to be some reason somebody set 77 as a right number once upon a time. And we're going to decide whether to go beyond it or not. So.
I know that's about me. Yeah, my bad about that. Great question. So that is based on the density of the P M O zoning district. You're allowed to have, I believe it was 15 dwelling units per acre. So before there was only 40 approved because they only had around, I think, three acres before they purchased the police parcel back from the town. So with the inclusion of the police parcel, they a lot, they would, they would, it's at 5.16 acres. So that would go up to just about 77 dwelling units would be allowed on that site. With that, with the current density of the property. So without, and that's without a waiver. So the 23 would just be an additional 23 dwelling units. That might be one to two more stories on the on each building. So in reality, it sounds like an increase of density, but because it's a multifamily project with a mixed use component, it's just increasing the height slightly. So that, but that's where that's, that's where the 77 came from.
Okay. So it's not about, we don't have to increase acreage because we're going up.
Yeah.
And that's why it's okay.
Yeah.
All right. And is it changing? Is the waiver changing it from an R one to an R two or an?
Oh, no. So that's already, it's already P M O. So because of how the P M O is zoning district is written, it's that waiver is to go above the density that's allowed. So that waiver is just by 23 dwelling units. So in reality, if they had more acre, if they had like one more acre, they would, they'd be fine. But just based on the site alone, that makes it that creates a need for the waiver. So.
So the in the police station, is that being sold by the town in in the, and I understand it's not a written deal. It's a dependent on what happens. But is that, is that negotiated a commercially market price?
Yes, that was agreed upon at in a, yeah, it it was agreed upon. I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but yes, it was agreed upon. We agreed to sell it back to them in order to, you know, make this project more feasible. How it was previously set up, their, the parking require, now they can meet parking requirements. They can meet the tendency or it makes the feasibility of the density of the site much more feasible, along with that 5,000 square feet of commercial space. That was the main thing because originally there was no commercial space on the site. Now they're adding commercial space. So from the town, that's a win. Win win for us where they are able to get more dwelling units while there's more commercial space on the site as well. So we feel like that will benefit the citizens of the town in the long run with that mix.
Okay. And essentially the change was, I think originally there was 20,000 square foot of commercial use.
Now it's going.
By not having the police station, it takes away about 15,000.
Yeah.
And changes it to residential and still leaving the 5,000 mixed use commercial.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Are the neighbor neighboring property owners aware of of the increase?
Yes. So I, as a part of the application, I did send out the public notice to them. They also own this, the properties next door. So that makes it a little more feasible, but the sites across the street as well as across Old Triangle Road, I did send it or this sites across the street, I did send out notifications too. So they are aware of that. We didn't receive any correspondence. Beyond that.
Last, last question or clarification, the 15 foot transitional buffer waving that. Is there going to be any buffer left? Is it waving all 15 feet? And is there any safety implications if they take away the buffer?
So the buffer is mainly going to be landscaping. There would be, there's going to be sidewalks there, correct? So there's going to be sidewalks there. So it's just making, now they don't have to put the landscaping there. To make it, it makes it more, it makes the project more feasible because of the tightness of the site. The site, the grade of the site is very high. It's a very high grade. It's difficult to traverse. So for this purpose, it makes it, makes the process of placing the buildings on the site much easier to not have that requirement of the 15 foot transitional buffer there.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Borka.
Hey, Commissioner Borka, my only question is for the noise mitigation portion of it. I see that, well, I presume that that includes sound walls. And I was hoping that we could the design of that would actually be able to come in front of the council. So we could at least take a look at that before it's actually in construction.
Yes, we have very specific requirements from Virginia Housing Development Authority on what we can build and what we need to build. And sound mitigation is a large component of what they look for. So it's what we build into every building that we do is, you know, soundproofing and insulation in the walls and the proper windows to help mitigate sound.
Okay. But I guess my, my, my thought was as far as the mitigation, I'm talking about like the sound walls or whatever that we would. I presume that we would see the the construction of those walls. And I was hoping that we could, that if there is any design considerations, it would come before the commission for that, before you guys.
Yeah, I could talk that. Yeah, that that's something that we would tackle at site plan. We would be able to see the grading of the site. So in reality, we're in that bottom, in the most northeast corner, I would say of that site. So if you're looking at the, if you're looking at the if you're looking at the M C P, it's the northeast site. So as I said before, the, the the steepness of that hill of that site right there. It makes it so it's how it currently is situated. The noise would not be a huge factor, I would say, coming from Old Triangle. There's not, there's not that many vehicle trips compared to Grand Park Road. But the noise, the noise is something we would take a look at it, site plan. Do you have anything to add, Larry? Yeah, if you all would like, once we get that submitted by town square, we could show that to you all at that point, just to.
Please, and thank you. Thank you. Thank you. No other questions from any of the other commissioners? Just as a I want to give the applicant a question, an opportunity for any of rebuttals for anything that we've discussed and you wanted to say anything.
Well, I'd first thank you for the opportunity to come here and present our project to you. And and we've been working closely with staff to come to some decisions on how to move this forward. And I don't think there's anything that we have to rebut. It's, it's been a very open conversation. Appreciate staff time of working with us to move this forward.
Okay, thank you. And with that, would someone make a motion for to vote for the public here? Motion for Commissioner Beisel.
Support.
Commissioner Borka, second. So for the vote, Commissioner Nias?
Approve.
Commissioner Beisel? Commissioner Borka?
Approve.
And I approve. So the passes, public hearing passes four to zero. Anything else on the agenda, not on the agenda from town staff? Anything else?
One, for those who have not filled out a W nine yet, I have put that at your, at your chair for tonight. If I, I do not heed that tonight, but if you want to turn it in, in the next two or three days, that'd be great. And the other item is I'd, I'll say is thank you all for coming here on Valentine's Day. I assume you all have partners in your life who are a tiny bit upset that you're here and not with them. But I just would like to send my thank you to not only you, but to your partner for allowing us to parley you for an hour. But other than that, that's it. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Well, open forum real quick. Commissioner Nias, anything?
Nope.
Commissioner Beisel, anything? Open forum.
Well, just to get that I do like the idea of the smart transportation sidewalks, everything like that is something that we all break up that's just because I like the a town where we can get from point A to point B. So however, we designed this town and the square, especially, you know, I'd like it to be accessible by foot for pretty much everybody. That's all I've got.
Sure. Thank you. Commissioner Borka, anything?
Pass.
Would someone like to make a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
A second.
Call for a vote. Commissioner Nias?
Approve.
Commissioner Beisel?
Approve.
Commissioner Borka?
Approve.
I approve. We adjourn the meeting.